Executive session. The first item that we have is the Sewers Disposal Ordinance. And Mr. Webster?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, you have a report dated October 17th. Now just capsulize some of that so everyone knows where we are with this. And it was during the Town Council Workshop of August 1st, 2005, to discuss the town ordinance revision suggested for sewers and sewers disposal. It was asked that a price be obtained from a consultant engineer to review the sections of the ordinance that deal with low-pressure sewer systems. Beta Group submitted the attached, and you have that before you, the attached November 11th, 2005 letter addressing this issue. The subcommittee met on several occasions to incorporate Beta's recommendations into the recommended revisions of Appendix C. You have the Appendix C with the revisions. In addition to the low-pressure sewer systems, we also looked at and made recommendations on Section 18, 4.6, sanitary sewer standards to the following sections. 18, 4.5, extension of sewer system that will allow the town to backcharge contractors for all costs associated with defective equipment or sewer lines for a period of 12 months. 18, 4.16, guarantee of performance and inspection and maintenance of improvements. This entire section was added. It was taken nearly verbatim from the Planning Board regulations. We felt that it was important that the town be protected for any sewer lines that were going in. This would mainly be those sewer lines that were going in and not being paid for by the town, but were being paid for by developer or by an association or a group of residents. Section 18, 7.1, findings. This section was rewritten to reflect current invoicing practices. And now the second section in there deals with an abatement program that has been in place, that's been followed by the Waste Water Management Commission and the superintendent. There were two members of the subcommittee that took issue with the abatement program. So that's something that we could not reach a consensus on. There were four members of the committee, Mr. Berg, Mr. Brady, Mr. Lindcourt, and myself. Two were in favor of retaining that abatement program and two thought that it should be either abolished or changed dramatically. The next one is 18, 7.3, collection of sewer use charges. Again, changes were made to reflect current practice and to allow flexibility in the billing schedule. And then Article 9, the onsite wastewater management. That entire onsite wastewater management ordinance that the council did adopt and voted to into place July 17th, we added that in here. We just renumbered everything so that it's consistent. Also, I attached all of the changes that were previously made. They were never voted by the council, so they are here for your consideration, just as a reminder. That goes back to August of 2005. Now, one thing that I would like to bring out, we did, today, we finalized these things. We did find some typos in the document, and we felt that those should be changed. If you could just bear with me a minute, I'll run through those with you. On page 8 of the ordinance, this is in the ordinance itself, it's CDC 8. Down at the bottom of the page, wastewater collection superintendent, there's a typo there, and wastewater. Also, it says, "or his authorized deputy," that probably should be his/her. On page 10, about two-thirds of the way down the page, it says, "in the event the board determines," and that should be the Waste Water Management Commission. All of the other places where "board" was referred to were changed to Waste Water Management Commission. This was just an oversight on that one. Now, on pages 48, 52, 53, 57, and 74, and you don't have to flip that quick, but if you just turn to the first one, page 48, and if you look about halfway down the page, you'll see "industrial" is spelled incorrectly, and that occurs on all of those other pages that I mentioned to you. So those errors will be corrected. There's another one on page, if we can go back to CDC 13, at the very bottom of the There is a reference there that talks about registered drain layer with the town. You recall back in July, you changed Section 70 that dealt with drainage, and we dealt with the street excavators. So instead of registered drain layer, it should be registered street excavator. That will make it consistent with the now-current ordinance. And the final one is on page 17. This was one that was not discussed with the committee, but Mr. Lindcourt brought it to my attention today. It's towards the bottom of the page in Section E, and it says that, "The applicant seeking approval of a low-pressure system must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Waste Water Management Commission." It should also be the superintendent and the Waste Water Management Commission. It should be to both of their satisfactions, we feel. I don't know if, Mr. Berg, you have any hot word with that at all? We haven't had a chance to discuss that, and I don't believe Mr. Brady was able to attend tonight. So with that, I would say we would be open to questions on the document. Hopefully, we can answer those questions.
I had a question. I did take a look at some of the suggestions I know that we made, was it 2005, at our meeting with regard to the burden of proof, who has the burden of proof with regard to the low-pressure system? And it seems to me you had addressed that. But I did have a question, and it's Item 1 on your covering memo, but it's on CDC 16. And it has to do with the backcharging the contractor for costs for a period of 12 months. And then it goes on to say, "or until the defective equipment or sewer lines are corrected." Okay? To me, that's a little unclear. Is it a 12-month cutoff period, or is it a five-year cutoff period?
It is a 12-month cutoff period, assuming that everything has been installed properly.
And if it isn't installed?
If it is not installed properly, it will not be a 12-month timeframe. It's until everything has been corrected.
So it's...
That's the intent.
The defect has to be noticed within a 12-month period, and if it is, the timeframe then is extended indefinitely until it's corrected.
Well, it doesn't say that. And I think it will be a matter of issue. And so I think that needs to be clarified.
Do you have suggested language?
Well, I was toying with, for a period of 12 months after acceptance. And I then said, is it the later or the earlier of? Now, Don has just added that if it's discovered within that 12-month period, then I think you're within the 12-month period. But if it's discovered in the fourth year after acceptance?
We will have no recourse then.
Even though...
I would say, would it be better if it says, "a minimum of 12 months after acceptance"?
Or maybe it means the earlier of a period of 12 months.
However, the town may backcharge the contractor.
Found within 12 months after acceptance?
Yeah, I think it should, it basically should say something that the town has the right to backcharge the contractor for any defects found up to 12 months after acceptance. Yeah, right. You know, I mean, such charges shall continue until defect is corrected, or defects are So you're basically saying if it's found within 12 months, you know, they're on the hook until it's, whatever our charges are, or whatever costs we have, they're on the hook for until they fix it.
And maybe it just says, "for a period of 12 months," or "discovered within 12 months after..."
It should be "discovered."
Yes, "discovered within 12 months after acceptance," no matter when it's corrected.
No, it should say, "and continue until the town may backcharge the contractor for any defects..."
For costs associated with...
Defect or sewer line.
Yeah, the way I've got it right now is, "for," let's see.
For costs associated...
"town may backcharge the contractor for all costs associated with defective equipment or sewer lines discovered within a period of 12 months after acceptance."
Maybe a period.
A period.
And not, and strike the rest of it.
Well...
I mean, if 12 months is the cutoff date, then if it's discovered within that 12-month period, no matter when, it's corrected.
But I think you need that last sentence that says, you know, "such charges will continue until the defective equipment or sewer line is corrected." So you want to say that...
Yeah, I think a separate sentence would be, "the charges shall continue until the defective equipment or sewer lines are corrected."
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, right. Another sentence at the end, the charges shall, yeah, right, "the charges shall continue until..."
Until defective equipment...
Or sewer lines are corrected.
Or sewer lines are corrected. Period.
Okay.
Getting back to this draft here, on the low pressure, number one, for new dwelling units and/or development proposals. Fifty or less dwelling units that are inaccessible for gravity sewer service, low-pressure sewer mains, shall be designed and installed by the developer with conveyance to the town upon a satisfactory completion. This shall consist of individually owned and operated positive displacement grinder-pump units in lieu of a common pumping facility. The sentence before that says that the developer is conveying it to the town.
Okay, could you give me the page?
Well, I'm on the draft here, the copy. I think you inserted it, it's the low pressure.
Is it what came from the, from Beta?
Yes, the document.
I think what we should do is, that was their suggestion, the actual language.
You have to look at the language that you have.
Okay, we should go to, where are you, Don?
We're going to find it here. Those are low-pressure systems.
It is on CDC 16.
Yeah, it starts at the very bottom of the page.
Yeah.
And continues after CDC 17.
So that was shaded?
Yes.
Where is not possible?
Yes.
Probably E is where, right, is the low-pressure system.
I did have one change in that E, or suggested change in that E, where, and you had mentioned one, the superintendent, you added there, the superintendent and the Waste Water Management Commission, since it has to come to the council for approval.
Yes.
I had also added, and shouldn't it also say, "and the council"? And maybe you have covered that in the prior sentence, because you do mention the town council for approval.
That is correct.
So maybe we can live with that the way it is.
What we're saying is, "low-pressure system shall," if it said, "for development..." Before it's even going to get to the council, it has to satisfy both the superintendent and the Waste Water Management Commission that it is justifiable, that it should be done. Then, if it satisfies that, it would then, that would be a condition before it would even make it to the council.
That's nice, is it Christmas music?
Oh, I think that's my cellphone that I didn't turn off. In fact, that's my phone. Just, don't worry, it stops, and I don't answer it.
Maybe we could, maybe we could turn it off?
It's nice, Don, I feel closer to you all of a sudden.
Does it play the other song?
It's appropriate, while we're doing septic system pumping and...
My question was on this language, to make sure that we're not accepting something, because it said two things in that language, and I'm trying to see how it was worded in the document, because basically, it's talking about conveying to the town upon a satisfactory completion, and then saying that the next sentence, it should be individually owned and operated.
If I could explain that, the lines that are in the street will be accepted by the town.
Okay.
Those that are in the street, the public right-of-way should be reserved for the public utilities. Anything that's out of the public right-of-way on the private property owner's dwelling, they're locked, that will be the responsibility of the private property owner. In other words, the pump that will be on the private property, and the lines, the pressure lines that are on the private property, those will be the responsibility of the homeowner. The council will only accept what is, what's within the town right-of-way or on an easement that would be given to the town.
But in some of the...
And in no case would the town accept each individual's pump at their home.
But if this system requires a pumping station, a pumping station is different, a pumping station is different from a low-pressure system.
Okay. Okay? A low-pressure system will have individual pumps at each of the homes, whereas a standard force main would have a pumping station. If that is for a neighborhood of residents, then the town would accept that. However, if the pumping station was strictly for a commercial or industrial property, the town would not accept it. And that is written in here. Can you find that one real quick, that we don't accept industrial or commercial? Okay, proposed pumping facilities that are located on private property and which exclusively service new commercial and/or industrial developments shall not be considered for acceptance by the town. That's a standard pumping station, not a low-pressure system, but a standard high-pressure system.
What are the other pumping stations that would be proposed, even if it was for industrial, that would be on a public way, would be?
Not necessarily. That may be on private, if it's for a commercial, private, for commercial or industrial, should not be located in the public way. It should be located on private property, because the town will not be accepting it.
But other than that, the language in V says, you know, "the town shall allow," well, it gets into pumping stations, "that the work shall be in accordance with the town standards and the cloud apparatus necessary to establish a functional acceptable facility is determined by priority to acceptance of a new pumping station and the turnover of operation and maintenance from the developer to the town. The developer shall operate the pump station at his own expense for a year, additionally shall pay to the town a sufficient sum to defray all estimated operational maintenance costs of the facility for a period of two years." This is, you know, we're going to allow developments that are going to add lift stations that are, you know, so they're going to go outside of the...
Oh, yes, yeah, if it's, yeah, we could have that. That's quite, not a low-pressure system.
No.
This is referring to a, if we have a development that's located at a lower elevation than our, than the, than the gravity line that it needs to get to, there's only one way to get there, and that would be a pump station. When we install our own lines, I think we'll find, we have the Ponte Pump Station. That's a pump station that...
No, I understand, there was a report done, and we go back to the report, that was done some 30 years ago or whatever, and designated an area of town to be serviced by sewers, and in that, it told us where the lift stations would have to be and so forth. Why are we going to now enter into a sewage disposable ordinance, a disposal ordinance, which is going to extend to me where sewers can go if we're starting to allow these additional pump stations when you can't feed into a line that's already been established? I thought we were trying to stay within the concept of this, what areas would be sewed in town on the 77 Berge Report, you know, with an update in 2000.
You still can do that, and you still have, the council has the right to determine where the sewers are going to be extended. If you choose to allow the extension, you have to have the ordinance and the regulations that spell out how it's to be done. And that's what we've done here. We've spelled out how it has to be done, should you choose to approve it.
So this doesn't give the ability to do it by rights, simply spells out the conditions the council could accept it under if it chose to?
That's correct.
It is clear throughout that any extension requires the town council approval.
I see this as, exceptions to this section must be approved by the town council. It doesn't say the town council is approving that. It says if there's an exception, you know, but that's, when you're reading this language, you know, where is the statement in here that all, because you're getting into... Well, because when I read, when I read down to D in this same section, it says that the exceptions to the section must be approved, which means that if it's covered in the section, it doesn't require an approval.
Well, I, you may have to help me out, but I did...
There is something in the previous paragraph, Don, that says, that the last sentence is talking about, it says, "the wastewater collection superintendent shall report to the Waste Water Management Commission, who shall make the recommendation to the town council to accept the new wastewater facilities."
Okay.
So at least it's implied, right? It's not spelled out directly that the council has to approve every single one, but it is in the process there.
So some are, some aren't.
Well, it says, wait a minute, I'm back on page CDC, unless I'm reading this, "notwithstanding any other duties and responsibilities..."
Which page?
Page CDC 10.
Some will be approved by the council, some not.
"Notwithstanding any other duties and responsibilities of the Waste Water Management Commission, no part of the sewer system for the town shall be constructed or extended without the approval of the town council and the consultation with the planning board." So, see definitions. Now, it...
There's also another one on page CDC 15B. And it says, "The developer, homeowner, or group or association of homeowners shall obtain approval of a proposed sewer extension from the town council, who will seek advisory opinions from the planning board and Waste Water Management Commission." And I believe that that's pretty all-inclusive of any project that comes forward. And that was the intent, I believe, of the zoning amendment, I mean, the charter amendment when it took place. That's where we got started with all of this, to make sure that that got in there. So I think you can see it's in there a couple places.
Okay. Now, should we talk about abatements?
If you'd like to. I think Mr. Lindcourt could explain the process as it's taking place right now, and why he feels that it should be continued.
Where's the language for that?
Hold on, it was in there. Hold on, hold on.
It's Section 18, 7.
Well, it's...
7-1.
It's CDC 46, but the accompanying memorandums sort of lay out the issue. So who wants to go first, Mr. Lindcourt?
Page 9, right, CDC 9.
It's the, if you look at the memo dated 9 August, then Mr. Lindcourt presents his issue, and then subsequently, Mr. Webster presents his. Starts right after the Beta. Starts right after the beta diagrams of equipment.
Back in 2001, the first abatement to Wildings Garage was issued by the commission. It's a program that has, that went on for a couple of years as, as a, a program that was not official. And then they did take a vote and make it official. Basically, any user in town that uses large amounts of water for anything other than discharging to the sewer, like watering lawns, there are a lot of people over in Country View Estates that have small lawns that they really like to keep up. And they're also on fixed incomes and they, they really can't afford to be spending money on their lawns and paying the city of Fall River for, for that, that water usage. And it's my opinion, in my very, very strong opinion, that, you know, our rates are high enough as they are. We shouldn't be making these people pay for a service that they're not using. The program that we have in place uses a meter that fits on their garden hose spigot outside. It's visible. It's taken in in the wintertime so it doesn't freeze. It's not a fixed meter. And this is one of the things that Mr. Webster disagrees with me on. He feels that there should be a fixed meter buried someplace in the basement of the house that the water company will come and, and take a water meter reading at the same time as, as they have their regular meter readings. And, and I really feel that having a separate meter that, that I can actually see is a much better idea because what's going to happen is a meter that is buried in somebody's basement, especially over in Country View Estates where it's, it's all crawl spaces. They're never going to be touched, except that if somebody wants to cheat the system, they're going to go down and, and tie in a pipe into the, into that meter, and nobody's ever going to know the difference. If, if there are any, if there's somebody that wants to cheat the system here, they're actually going to have to run a hose into the house or something like that. I feel confident that this is a good system. It's been working. There are other towns larger than ours that use these meters. Willingsburg, West Virginia, I think it is, uses the system, and they have good luck with it. These are single-stage meters. If they, if they start to go bad, they will read less flow, not more flow. So when my predecessor picked these meters, he did it, I feel that he did a good job.
Okay. We've heard from the pro. Now we'll hear from Mr. Webster with the opposing argument.
What's being done is you have a portable meter that the homeowner is not restricted as to where that portable meter can go. While it's nice to think in many cases it probably is attached to a garden hose, but it could be, the fact of the matter is that it can be moved anywhere. So it could be brought in in the wintertime and put onto a washing machine and run everything through the washing machine. It's completely portable. We have no control whatsoever. It's made to be portable, as opposed to a fixed meter that the water department would, would install. The numbers are that there are 75 of 450 customers who are annually granted this type of reduction. Okay? That's, that represents about 16.7% of the, of the customers receiving reductions. Of that amount, only 13% of the readings are checked. It's a very small percentage. It's not very, a very good checks and balances here to ensure that the meter is functioning properly or that it's not being tampered with or that there's not some type of pilferage where the water is actually being diverted and, or not going out onto a lawn, but actually going back into the system. I don't think it's reasonable to expect that one person is going to be able to, one to take this. We have a one-person wastewater department right now. I don't believe it's reasonable that we're going to have a checks and balances on this system with one, one person. The meters are located on private property. There's no penalty for altering or tampering with the meter. So if anyone does something like this, there is no penalty. All we have here is a, a system to allow people to get an abatement, but nothing if they, if they perform some, some type of activity that would, shouldn't be legal. Again, I've talked about the portability, and I've also talked about there's no assurance that the water that actually goes through this meter is not making its way back into the wastewater system. For example, it would be easy to fill a pool through a private meter and then empty the pool through a house connection right into the sewer system, and we would have no way of knowing that. What we should be doing is we should be encouraging water conservation. This is contrary to water conservation. We're encouraging people to go out and put water on the lawns and there's, you know, all they're doing is paying for, for the water. The other way, there is an incentive not to go through, not to do the watering. And while it's nice to have a good lawn, it's also important that we protect our resources of our water for the entire community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
Can I ask you a question? On page 46, CDC 46. Under your argument, Mr. Webster—
Yes.
Am I correct that subsection three would be deleted?
Yes. It would either be deleted or if you want a program, it should be based on an actual separate water meter, one or the other. So three would come out.
Okay.
If you choose to not follow the, not continue with the abatement program.
Okay. Now, if, so there's sort of three options for us to consider. One, the continuation of the present practice.
Yes.
Two, do away with the present practice.
And have no—
And have no—
No program.
Or three, have a program with a meat, not a portable meter, but an installed meter.
A fixed meter, it would be for, separate for water that did not go back into the wastewater system. Correct.
Okay.
David, who would read that second meter?
The, whichever water authority had jurisdiction, either Stormbridge or North Tiverton. Because it's still their, their water, the people are still billed for the water, it's just going to be going through. If you choose to go that way, it would be a second meter reading.
So we would be adding to the burden that the water districts currently have anyway of reading, reading meters and asking them to read these additional meters, right?
Yes.
To adjust their bill.
To, to allow us to adjust our bill because we are dependent on the districts. They provide us the information and from there we calculate our rates. I agree with Mr. Webster. One of the biggest thefts in municipal government is actually water. And, you know, while I think we all want to be considerate, we all recognize the high cost of water in this region, which is far higher than the mid-Atlantic area, very, very, very few communities even do this, if at all. They typically do for high-end users such as car washes, you know, where they would not be discharging back into the system. It might be, the conservation is encouraged instead of, you know, water usage right now. Even now, the North Tiverton Fire District is stretched a little bit on some of their lines for, for demand. You know, I'm empathetic to people who are on modest incomes, but we're just encouraging potential and proper behavior, and we really don't have the manpower to go out and police it. And it's just creating an additional burden on the town staff. And if this, you know, if it went from 75, what happens if it goes to 450 users? And it just, you know, keeps on climbing. It's not a well-known program, I don't believe. Now it is.
Mr. Burke?
I just want to point out, Mr. Webster is not the sole dissent. I agree with him in two respects. I felt that it should cease. And he explained my opinion as well as his, very agreeable.
Madam President, since we're talking about fees and charges here, can I ask if anyone has an idea about how much water someone might use on a lawn? I realize it's an estimate and a guess. And also, on the other side, you know, what the cost of installing a meter and reading might be? I mean, I'm just trying to see where these figures lie.
Most of the users over in Country View Estates, their, their abatement is in the, between $50 and $150 a year. It costs $90 to actually buy the meter from the vendor and have it shipped to them. And when they get the meter, I go out and inspect the meter, make sure that the, the tab on it that, that shows me that it's not, it hasn't been tampered with, is still on it. I, I tell the homeowner how to, how to use the meter, and I, I tell them exactly what is allowable and what is not allowable for that meter. As far as having uses like taking their, their pool water and discharging it back into the sewer, I would propose if you wanted to have a change in the program, have everybody that, that wants to be in the program sign a consent form stating that they will not discharge any of this water down the drain. I really, really believe that there will not be, there may be a little bit of pilferage, but I really, from the people that are actually using this program, I don't see it. The other thing is I do have the ability to track the, the abatements that are coming out of this program. And a user that, that starts to go up, I, I'll be able to tell it.
Mr. Lindkort, how many people are in the program?
About 75 right now.
Out of current, how many users show us?
About 450.
Is this program widely advertised up until this point?
No. People over in Country View Estates, they talk to each other. And when, when a new street comes online, I find that about half the users inquire about it.
So there's nothing to prevent 450 people from seeking you out tomorrow, John?
That's correct.
Who uses this, John? People with sewer, air water or, you know, because this is open to people who naturally have to just get a water bill, correct? Because this would be saving them on—
No, 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 no. They still have to pay their water bill.
They have to pay the water bill because the way it works is—
It's just on the sewer side, right?
Just on, on the sewer side, yes.
On the sewer side.
Yes. I, I, I think it would be suicide if, if they had to pay that water bill.
So this, so this helps them on, on the sewer side of their, they're always paying that, right?
We, we had one customer over at Ford Farm that, that had a, a normal sewer bill of about $150 every three months. And he installed a sprinkler system in his lawn. And he got a $900 water bill for one, one cycle.
For watering.
For watering his lawn. And that was before he put a, went out and bought a meter.
You mean a $900 water and sewer bill?
No, no, a $900 sewer bill.
Sewer bill, okay. You said $900 water bill.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I mean, it's important.
Yes. $900 sewer bill.
Assume what, what came in went, went back out.
Right, exactly.
John, so the council understands, and everybody else understands, what was their normal bill before they put the sprinkler system in?
As I said, about $150.
Okay. So if we, if, if the additional 750 feet, fee, dollar fee was that charge, how many thousand, how many cubic feet of water was used now? And break that down into how many gallons of water was put on the property?
Yeah.
You're talking a fair amount—
Hundred and 5,000 gallons of water, using 700 as a unit and breaking down the 900 by the $6 per 100 cubic feet for 150 units, and the unit being 700. So you're telling me the guy watered his lawn to the tune of 105,000 gallons? He should have to pay.
I mean, I mean—
I mean, that's a waste of water. Hundred and 5,000 in a three-month period.
He might, he might have had a broken line, let's not—
Well, no, but I'm just saying.
No, because after he got that, after he got that bill, he cut it back.
There you go.
He certainly did.
Hold on.
Hundred and 5,000.
The point is—
I mean, originally—
Obviously well-taken.
Originally, you know, I think the effort was to, to give some relief. I think there was a good intention to give some relief—
I believe you.
—to elderly people. I don't think anybody here, and I don't disagree, recognizes that the rates that we are paying to have our wastewater treated are excessive. But there's another approach to handle that issue, and that we are trying to work with Fall River to discuss that. One of the reasons why the rates are so high is because we are not using, we're using approximately 100,000 gallons a day of our capacity of 2 million gallons. And that's, you know, they have operating costs, whether we like it or not. And I'm not trying to defend the water rates. But, I mean, when you're hearing if it, if 105,000 gallons is right over a three-month period, that's an ungodly amount of water. And that's, that creates a stress, frankly, on the North Tiverton Fire District. And I think we should be encouraging conservation and encouraging plannings that are less need of water.
You know, water is going to become the precious metal in the next 10 years. And for the town to be encouraging, really, through its rate structure, indiscriminate use of water is crazy, to be honest. And with all, with all due respect, that example that Donald just did in a quick calculation is, is beyond wasteful. Flies in the face of everything that we are reading. There's a water coalition group in Rhode Island that is working feverish on, you know, how, how do we control water in the state? So that argument is, of conservation is quite compelling. But I, Mr. Ramatowski, I know you've had your hand up. Brian just—
Well, I mean, a brief comment that there's one other issue, I think, related to the water districts, and I remember one of them, and I noticed that they have a minimum charge now— now for water regardless of what you use.
It's only one district.
It will still charge a certain amount of money. I'm wondering if the sewage bill will be based on that minimum charge or will be billed on the actual amount of water that somebody puts through the system as measured by it either.
It's based on their actual water usage, not the minimum charge. North Tiverton, I don't believe, has a minimum charge. Well, North Tiverton, I get my bill based on an actual reading and Stone Bridge used to do the minimum charge and then an overage after you did the base rate. And my bill has never showed a minimum charge in North Tiverton. It's always--
You may not be at that number, but you may be above it.
But I mean, it doesn't even indicate in any place a minimum charge for so many units. And I think there used to be like a 60,000 gallon minimum charge in the Stone Bridge District. And then they, you know, there was a couple of different ways, but I've never seen anything relating to minimum or overages. It's just based on number of units, which are based on the 100 cubic feet and a multiplication of the $2 and some cent charge, you know, per 100 cubic feet for the water.
Well, I think, anyway, all points are well-taken. This, I believe, will be on our agenda for Monday night. And by Monday night, we will make a decision with regard to whether to continue the abatement program or scrap it. And are there any other questions?
Yeah. How can you come up with the 15% number on water consumption for the abatement program?
That was just a number that I had picked as a, as a doable, something that is much higher than the normal usage. It was basically a number that I just picked.
So if somebody was using 60,000 gallons, they'd have to use over 4,000 gallons outside the system in order to qualify for the abatement program?
Correct.
Okay. Now, just correct me, if the council decided to, because on Monday night, we will publish, I mean, vote is to hold a public, I mean, advertise this for public hearing, and we should have a sort of completed draft when it goes out for advertising. But as I read it, the both three and five, if the council decided to do away with the abatement program, three and five would come out. Right. Am I right on that, Mr. Webster? Or Mr. Lindgren, or both of you?
Three, certainly.
Yes, and five would also come out.
Okay. Can we then leave it at that, folks? Okay, folks, on the left-hand side? All right, we will, this will be on the agenda for Monday night?
And we will give you a revised document to reflect the one change that was made in that one section. And also to make the corrections that were--
On the typos?
--read to you on the typos.
Okay.
And give you a revised document, something that can be, that the clerk can have--
It's a shape--
--for distribution. Yeah, a lot of trees died with this.
A lot of trees died. Just replace the pages. Okay, maybe. Yeah. Give me the pages. Can you give me a--
Okay, we can try to do that. We could try, just make the changes on those pages. I don't think the changes will stretch that far that it won't--
Right. Maybe 10 pages at the most.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can just--
You can work that out with the clerk.
I think we can work that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was excellent work by the drafting committee, I must say. Monumental task. They're going to get rewarded in heaven, though. Okay.
Hopefully before I get there.
You're right. Okay, Conservation Commission.
rewrites of one existing one, which is the noise ordinance that we'd like to try to move forward on. And I guess we're looking for, again, how you want to handle it, if you feel some of them are fairly straightforward and could go forward in the near future, while some others may be a little more controversial and you want to discuss them, work on them. I would like to get some advice from--
Okay.
--the council.
For the council's consideration, I had a thought as I looked at these over the weekend. Once again.
Again.
And I mentioned this to the town solicitor last week, to move the noise ordinance to a, because I looked at it again, and it does need to be integrated. You know, you, it's, it does. There's some provisions that seem to, reading one might contradict the others. One of the things that I thought of is to ask the town solicitor to integrate the document by the second meeting in January. And give us an integrated draft, okay? With regard to the lighting ordinance, I thought we're on the verge of extending an offer to a planner. And it seems to me that lighting is part of the site plan review. And one of the first tasks of that now-to-be-named planner, which I understand from the administrators, is we're very close on a decision by him, is to task that planner with looking at lighting in general. Because we need to look at it. We never know what's going to come down the pipe. The town is growing, blah, blah, blah. But the particular planner has probably had some experience in this area. And with varying ordinances, and ask that planner to come up with a proposal, such as, you know, what is the best lighting, using whatever resources the planner can have? So sort of turn over that, working with the planning board, to develop a lighting sign ordinance.
A portion of that, I think, was also done when you redid the sign ordinance for the illuminated signs.
We did.
There's some things addressed in here that have been addressed subsequently.
Right. So sort of take an overview of where we are. With regard to stone walls, we cannot do everything at once, but I think as soon as we finish the noise ordinance, which is going to take some time, if sewers took us over a year, I hope noise does not take us over a year, but it's going to take us a while. Then we will turn our attention to the stone wall process. And that's a simpler ordinance. But integrating the ordinance is going to require some drafting. And I have heard from the town administrator that department heads would like to also take a look at that, the noise ordinance again, to see where we are with it. So what I would like to suggest is that we get to the town administrator, whatever comments folks have. You don't need a drafting committee, do you, Mr. Tights? You've been very quiet tonight. It's not like you.
I'm kidding, one's up. No, I think we know where we are, and I know the members of the Conservation Commission that we need to work with, and I think that would be fine. We could have, deadline is always helpful because we always have some crisis or another coming up.
Yes, we do. So we have a little deadline.
Have a deadline, January 22nd, to have a revised draft, which would be in the form of an ordinance fitting into our current code application.
That's for the noise one itself or--
Yes, the noise.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we will combine the streetlight portion with the outdoor light, because that was a separate one initially.
We're going to turn over to the planner--
Okay.
--and say, okay, among the first priorities that you have is to consider this, and here's what we have. Do your best.
Okay.
Now, is that sort of an outlined process for the council?
I would only add that on the stone wall ordinance, there is some very strong opinions surrounding the stone wall. And listening to a variety of people, I found myself in much agreement with the preamble. When you start looking at the details of how to regulate it, it gets to be pretty heated, I guess is the word, because we're really starting to, actually, we're dealing with an art form, if I may be allowed a little bit of latitude in it. And now we're starting to tell some of the stone wall masons how they're going to practice their art. And I find that some of them have some pretty strong opinions about that.
Well, don't forget--
But it's okay to do that later. I just wanted to get that comment in.
Right. Seems to me I recall your comments. The, don't forget, at some point, the council will decide whether to go out to a public hearing or not. So that's, it's within our power. But I'd rather get through the noise before we address--
I believe also that that draft is based on an ordinance that's in place in the town of Portsmouth. They helped us with some writing and some words on that.
Okay.
In regards to the lighting ordinance, in fairness to the individual, that I'm in the process of doing this offer so he doesn't head back the other way, you know, we do have a zoning ordinance that needs to be put into place in regards to bringing the comprehensive plan into action. I mean, it's great that we've gone through this process, and it's up at Rhode Island Office of Planning right now for approval, but really the next phase to put that into action is updating the codes, updating the zoning maps. I mean, when are we looking for this? So this, you know, the individual's got to get an office up and running, or, you know, what, I mean, I don't, I want to give these, this gentleman--
Some priorities.
--some priorities and timelines that are realistic without burning him out.
And running him out of town.
Well, I think, one, we have some time on the zoning. But I would think within a couple of months, that person should, he may be drawing on some experience.
Well, we both know that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, not, we're not being, he has experience with lighting.
Right. And it may be a much smaller ordinance, you know, or he may say, hey, this is the way to do it, and we'll amend the ordinance with the planning board or work with them. It may not be as comprehensive as what is before us, maybe something less than that. So, but a man's reach should exceed his grasp, or what's a heaven for? That's the only way I can answer that.
There's other point is, it's been around for a while, and if we wait too long, we risk somebody building something that will be--
Right.
--very, very detrimental from this point of view. There've been articles in the paper the last few months about driving range in Swansea that blinds residents in Warren and so on and so forth. So I'm not saying that's going to be built here, but this type of a regulation would prevent those types of things. I think people have a right to enjoy their property and not have lights blazing on them. It's a form of pollution, it really is.
Yeah. I think we don't know what's coming down the pipe, and it may be worthwhile to have somebody looking at where we are.
This would also put our town right in the forefront of this. I don't think any other town in the state has these regulations, so it would be on the cutting edge. And being proactive for a change on some of the zoning things.
Thanks a lot, Tom.
Run them out before they come in.
Okay. You're done.
Thank you.
You're getting run out of town.
Let us go to the finance director.
You're okay.
Okay. Thank you for squeezing me in. It's, to me, it's clear that the vote at the financial town meeting as well as the vote on November 7th result in two endings, either of two endings. One being that I resign, because I made it very clear when I, over the past two years in working for a full-time position, that it's never been my intention to create and then set myself up for a full-time job. So in that ending, the full-time elected treasurer, I would resign, and you would then appoint somebody until the next general election. And at that time, you would have an elected treasurer to serve out the remainder of my term, which would be two years. The other ending is that I stay on as a part-time treasurer, and the council appoint a finance In that instance, you have the appointed finance expertise within the town's administrative structure. That's problematic because it requires that we agonize over the assignment or transfer or delegation of duties from the treasurer to this finance official. And I mentioned it in my agenda request when I asked to appear before you, and I recall that Don also mentioned that at the last meeting. So those are the two endings I see. I can live with either one, but we're the eight elected officials, I think, that are expected to decide how to proceed with this. And again, I'm open to any suggestions or discussion the council may have in going forward with this. Thank you.
You know, once we had the vote in November, in which, I guess it was a 60% majority of the people voting, did not agree with the proposal, and yet I think everybody recognizes the need to have a full-time person. The first suggestion that you have of making the treasurer a full-time position, really, one, is consistent with that vote and is consistent with the charter. And that's the problem that I have.
The problem I have is, I don't think we can have an elected treasurer and a finance director with the duties and powers that are spelled out for the treasurer in the charter. Because we have no way of taking those duties and moving them anywhere but the auspice of the treasurer. So we would have a financial director who would be almost powerless in terms of working with the finances of the town. So based on the vote, I think we need to be able to have a treasurer. The problem is, once again, I mean, we can appoint someone who closely, you know, meets the criteria we're looking for in an appointed treasurer if there's that person available within the town. But as an elected position, we can't maintain, you know, those qualifications in the election of a treasurer. You know, it's by the state, all he has to be is an elector of the town, and he can run for treasurer.
I think--
Is there any--
Is there, is there any merit to having a finance director that reports to the elected treasurer? And I've mentioned this to Mr. Amorantis before, and we talked it a bit, but I don't think we ever reached a conclusion, but I would float that for further discussion.
The general law is provide for a deputy treasurer. But the treasurer, the treasurer proposes the deputy treasurer to the council, and the council would then either consent or not consent. I did that in, when I was treasurer from 1990 to 1992. I went before the council and asked, because I was going to be out of the country for an extended period, and I asked them if they would permit the appointment of the current assistant, then assistant treasurer and still assistant treasurer, Sue Convoy, if they would allow the appointment of her as deputy treasurer to do all the duties of the treasurer in my absence, except for that, that is one exception. And the council voted to allow that in that instance, but that was just a temporary situation. But that does not put this, this person within the town's administrative structure.
No, I realize that. I just offer another alternative for consideration. That would have to be further evaluated, and the assignment would have to be worked through to think of all the different aspects of.
I think if, I think if, if the charter, there are maybe two or three additions to the language in the charter that hopefully would scare away anybody that just wants to pick up a quick $60,000. And I think you can do that. You can be very precise by adding, for example, this, this person runs the day-to-day operations of the treasurer's office and, and is able to perform the duties of the staff in the event of their absence, number one. Number two, this person will attend all department head meetings. This person is, and using some of the language that we crafted for the proposed charter change for the finance director, this person will attend all financial town meetings. And, and language like that is going to make it very clear to anybody that is, is considering filing a declaration and then getting the signatures, that this, that we're not electing a suit. We're electing somebody that's going to be there eight hours a day. I don't know.
Jim, I agree with you. I think we've set out the qualifications tracking what we did for the finance director, but total it under a full-time treasurer's title. And I think there's nothing to prevent us from being that selective, and I think you're right on that.
I think, I think you may have some serious problems in thinking that you're going to take an elected position and put some parameters on there that go outside the general law as to, you know, where it goes. I mean, to make, to make the requirements, you know, mandatory to attend, you know, department head meetings, financial town meetings, I mean, the individual probably, you know, wouldn't get elected again if he didn't comply, but I don't think you can force him, you know, to, you know, I think, I think we're, you know, fooling ourselves if.
But we, but we did that, we did that in the ballot question.
No, no, no. In, in the ballot question, to have a finance director, you can have all of that, because once you, once you do an appointment of a position, then you can do what requirements and restrictions you wish to place on that. When you elect an individual, you remember what the state law says, and, you know, we went through this in terms of, if this passed, we would have to seek exception from the general assembly to not have an elected treasurer. And it was, said that if you got it passed, then it would be easy to get that accomplished. But the treasurer's going to fall under, you know, what's expected of him as an elected treasurer, under the guidelines of the state of Rhode Island. And that's, you know.
But the state of Rhode Island says, here are the powers and duties.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's very general.
It's very general. It doesn't say, and you, but in the initial appointment, I think we can look for a person that.
In our, no, in our initial, in appointing, we can look for any qualifications we want.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying, because, but it still gets back, it gets back to, that's only for the two-year term, it's not for the four-year term that Mr. Amorantis was elected to. Because our charter clearly says we can only appoint till the next general election.
Right. That's exactly right.
But let's, let's move on to the charter. Now, if, if we assume that anybody that's interested in this job is at all thinking, section 602A, treasurer shall have the duties, blah, blah. A, assure compliance with all applicable accounting standards and requirements. Monitor the spending. Oversee the process of the payroll. Monitors the town cash position. Manage, manage town investments. And there is also some general law that is applicable to that. Work as appropriate financial advisor and counsel to general and special obligations. And I'm paraphrasing these in the interest of time. Participate in the preparation of the annual town capital improvement. Serve as a trustee for the police pension. Prepare an annual operating budget. And then, number 10 is a long thing of all the additional duties. And number 11, provide advice and recommendations to the negotiation of the Asmies contract. So, anybody that is thinking at all, looks at those requirements, and Don will better know what they're doing, that still comes back to Mr. Boland's point, that having said all that, somebody could still say, oh, I can do that and run for office at least one term. But hopefully, somebody would think about that and understand there's some daunting things. Just number one, assure compliance with applicable accounting standards and requirements. In today's world, the standards are changing and tightening so fast, that's, that's a task in and of itself.
And there's also
I think we do have some protection in that language.
And you have, you have Cox Cable and some of the local organizations do invite the candidates to appear before them, and, and that's, that's the time when you're going to separate the wheat from the chaff, I think. If you've got the people that can ask the right questions.
Simply ask the question, please expand, explain Gatsby 45, explain what Gatsby is, let alone 45 or 34.
What's the acronym? That'll, that'll
That's going to
Well, again, if, it's, it's something that I, I hope we can generally get a consensus on, because I'm prepared to, if that's the case, then, then that makes it very easy. I would simply talk about my letter of resignation, if, if that's, if that seems to be the way we'd be going. And my timetable in that instance, and I generally talked about it, would be to at least complete this important $30.7 million bond issue, which I started working on. We issued, as you may recall, a $7 million bond anticipation note. We're going to do another $5 million in January, February to complete the financing for the new elementary school. And then I've been working with Rybeck to decide, and I've been talking to Louise from time to time on, on the permanent financing and the timetable for that, which looks like May or June. So, my letter of resignation, which I would tender therefore within, within the next 30 days, would, would probably have either May 31st or June 30th as the effective date, which gives you adequate time to, to do the advertising, a very methodical search, and then, and then the selection. The only other thing I would ask the council to consider, and I was planning to come before the council Monday night, and this goes back to getting some help in the interim by way of, of a temporary appointment of a finance director, which I did have on the agenda last month, for the purposes of audit matters and payroll matters. If, if Glenn and I are able to hold down the fort, say, through May, we're saving the town $5,000 a month, because as you know, the voters approved $30,000 for the finance full-time position for, for May through June. 30,000 divided by six is 5,000 a month. So, that's the only thing I would bring to the council's attention, that I'll ask our town clerk to, to put that agenda request back on, and I would ask the council if they'd kindly consider it over the next week. So, that's, that's all I have. It's, I, it seems to me that we're going to proceed that way, that we will, we will have an elected treasurer. Somebody will run for that position, fill out the papers in June of 2008. And in the meantime, the appointment you make will be until November of 2008, whenever the swearing-in date is, I guess. I don't know if Andy has anything to say or anybody else. Glenn?
You know, I have a little, I'll let you speak, but I have a little concern about adding, honestly, more duties on the town administration for any number of reasons. But I do have that concern.
Well, that's a, that's a side issue that Mr. Amorantis, Jim and I have been talking about. I mean, we all, I think we made maybe an assumption that the voters understood what we were trying to do and bring the level of expertise onboard that is to help assist and take the town's the next level, step for long-range planning and the full-time work that, and expertise that is needed, that, you know, Jim is a part-time treasurer, and it's not fair to expect him to put the hours in as a part-time individual, where most department heads are frankly putting in 45 to 60 hours a week. I think most of our employees work a 32 and 1/2 hour week in the general government, because that's contractual. And if we go over that, we have to compensate them in some fashion or form in a pri, I mean, premium time. But we clearly need that assistance. You know, we need the level of financing and the level of expertise to assist my office in budgeting and long-range planning. And I don't, and we may find that person, we may be very lucky to find that person in Tiverton, but I'm not so sure we're going to find him, him or her here. Accounting for municipalities is getting, I think as Councilor Leonard indicated well, more and more complicated each year because of increasing regulations. And being able to, when we have so many financial challenges facing this town from long-term liabilities, we need more, we need, we need the best people we can get in here to assist this office. It can't be just me doing it when my time allows, or Jim, when he is here, and he is here frequently. We have grown past this. This is no longer a small town. We all, I think most of you all agree with that. We are to that level now. I don't know where to go with this. We need, we need to make a decision. I did, I will be very frank, I did support Jim's concept of a continuum of a part-time treasurer in a custodial role to oversee, to provide the extra level, and to bring on a full-time finance officer, if that's the term you want to use, from a day-to-day standpoint, to manage the department. Every, even the town administrator delegates to a degree his responsibility, because if not, I'd never leave town hall. You have to delegate to a degree. But I, I have to say, I know I supported Jim's original concept of Jim being here and having this full-time professional person that would answer to him, answer to me, and answer to you. He may have to be very solemn in like in his decisions and the patience of Job, as the town council president has used that term earlier. But we definitely need that level of expertise. You know, we used to do, for instance, a CAPRA, which allowed us to do long-term financial planning. We don't do that anymore. You know, we do it year to year. That doesn't give me the knowledge base that I need to help make good recommendations to you. We need the professionalism. I'm not so sure, a town of only 16,000 people, we're going to find that person who's going to want to come and work a municipal-type job on a three-year contract. I really think you're going to have some problems. But I also don't have the answers either.
And particularly, the vote, I think the one thing that's really clear is the voters had a really firm opinion about the proposal. I mean, it was, there's no, no, no close call.
No.
It was a very definite no.
No.
But clearly, they also approved the concept, and I think that's where Jim and I were coming from earlier, this concept of financial officer, because that was part of the
Yeah. I don't think anybody who is fair-minded about it would disagree with you and Jim. The level of expertise is there. And perhaps we did not do a sufficient job explaining what was about. But, fact is, reality is, we help hold elections and voters have their say. So now we have to work with what is, what is out there and how to best, how best to obtain what we need, given that vote. And that's the way I sort of see it. But I don't rule out the fact that there may be somebody out there that
If I may, Madam President, there may be somebody out there, they may, they may, they may be qualified, they may run, and they may or may not get elected. So we're, I mean, I, I see this as a, as a dead end, it's just too wide open.
Well, don't forget that we will also, I think, be engaging in charter commission with regard to the financial town meeting, as to studying that. And it may give the opportunity for those of us who think that we should integrate an appointed position into the town structure, an opportunity to review it again and to do a better job of explaining it. So, that is, that is out there, and that's an option. I'm sure it's going to come up when the charter commission takes another look.
Right. I'm just concerned with another year or two.
I know.
You know, where we really wanted to do, we, we did get money approved at the financial town meeting, and therefore, I assume we approved the position of finance director. I mean, I, I thought what might happen here is that if, if the current treasurer resigns, that the council may have the power to have the, the newly-elected treasurer's salary, you know, reduced to an honorarium of, you know, 200 a month or something like that, and that the finance director would be a separate position that, or perhaps it would be, be the deputy treasurer who would then fit into the scheme of things as they are, so we can move ahead in some manner.
I think the
Thank you.
The position that, that was described on the docket, I thought it was left open the door to either a treasurer or finance director, in that it was denominated as a treasurer slash finance director, so it was not exclusively listed as a finance director. It could have been either one.
Well, that's where I think the right of the, the elected council can, can move in one way or another on that. That's, that was kind of my suggestion. Andy?
Yes, um, as I've been listening to this, I've had a couple of thoughts. One of which is, just as a practical thing, I think you have to realize what you're talking about, if you're filling the vacancy, is only 18 months. And that will make it very difficult to get someone who will be willing to, you know, take the job, knowing that they're either going to have to have a charter change in that time and hope for the best, or they're going to have to run for office themselves. So, I think, I think it'll be hard to find a professional, a financial professional, to do it under those parameters. But that's something, you know. Secondly, I guess we need to always remember that the voter, and this is, ties in with looking at the financial town meeting. The answer is, the voters at the financial town meeting are only a small subset of the voters. are only a small subset of the voters who vote in an election. And I think there's a difference there. What I heard people say, and I don't know if it's true or not, and I guess I just, in thinking going forward, people seem to be saying the reason the voters said no was because they wanted a, some kind of checks and balance. It's sort of an anti-federalist thing. They wanted a check there. So maybe there's some way around it so that that can be the role that the treasurer does fill. The treasurer could be more like an auditor general-type position as a part-time position that would be responsible. Most of those items in the charter are supervisory, not actually doing it, so that maybe there's a way that the treasurer can perform that function and then have someone, the deputy treasurer or whatever, that would actually do it. And then the final thought is perhaps there's something that could be done without sourcing or consultant basis, where you wouldn't find someone who'd be willing to, you know, give up everything and come here to work full-time just to have their only job, you know, disappear in 18 months. Perhaps you might find someone either part of a small firm or sole practitioner accountant type or something like that that might be willing to take this on as a client, not necessarily as a full-time position, but that might be able to be some way of providing the financial expertise under that elected supervision without having to actually appoint someone and get caught in that position.
The situation is not an 18-month situation. If Mr. Amorantes stays on as a part-time treasurer and we hire someone, if we can get over those charter issues because it's a four-year term. So, you know, it's not, when we talk about...
If he stays, right.
Right. If we can find the way that the delegation of the duties, if it falls within by appointing a finance director as an assistant treasurer, that those duties, you know, were somewhat a shared duty, maybe there is a way to make that work.
In the, I know, I know we have some, we've got to move on, but I would just echo one point. I think Mr. Tights made the checks and balance, that that has taken some of the things we've talked about, it may be hiring the deputy treasurer, but yet having an elected treasurer to exercise that check and balance may be the core that the voters were really concerned about.
That may, I'm just saying, I see that as the possibility to be a working way to do this because then we have basically two people responsible for those same list of duties. And it doesn't become that 18-month, you know, you can offer somebody three years as an appointment because if Mr. Amorantes retains a position for this term, we'll back into that, you know, we're going to have a treasurer elected for four years. Not, it's only true if he leaves because we can only appoint till the next general election. His term is a four-year term. So I think if we look at it in that respect, maybe we should be looking at to see if, because I don't think, and we have to look at, first of all, if the deputy treasurer has to be elected. That's the first thing to look at, whether how it fits under the Rhode Island general law. I mean, I don't know the answer. I'm asking the question because, well, because if we find out it doesn't have to be, you know, it can be an appointed position, then I think, you know, there's still a little bit of investigation that we may be able to move in a direction that's going to accomplish what we need to accomplish and the checks and balance remain in place.
I mean, if, I don't know if it's appropriate at a workshop to ask Mr. Tights to try to review the duties and I did provide in my agenda...
Sure, sure. It is appropriate to ask him to check any...
I did, I did provide in my agenda request the duties that were proposed for the financial director, my current duties, and I also provided in there what I thought were the minimum things that I have to retain without running a file of the charter. And I mean, if this is something that the council wants Andy to look at, maybe he can come back with something that says, yeah, here's the things that could happen. I just want to make sure that we respect the instructions of the voters, which were quite clear, and that's the elected treasurer has to stay, whether it's appointed a full-time is certainly one of the endings that I think are permissible.
Well, there is nothing in the charter that says the treasurer is part-time. It just says a treasurer.
Julia, but I would, I would, I would tend to lead in the direction, if we're going to consider something like that, see, see what duties Andy feels could go to this other person. If this other person is the finance official, I would, I would support a finance official reporting to either the town council, which was my first choice, or the town administrator rather than a deputy treasurer, but it's regardless. I mean, if we have a deputy treasurer, then there's really no need to pour through all these duties. Because if you look at the general law, I've got a copy of it, I just couldn't find it.
And that's the beauty of a deputy treasurer.
Well, but on the other hand, this person is not within the town administrative structure and...
If you're not happy with the performance of the deputy treasurer, only the treasurer can take action on it, not the administrator or the council.
Based on, based on the vote and everything that's come to take place here, it just seems to make sense to have two separate things where they, it seems as though the people wanted to have that watchdog type of independent treasurer position, even if that is the part-time oversight type of thing. And then you have the deputy who's doing the full-time work under the treasurer with that independence remaining. It seems as though that facet has to be there and to simply replace the part-time treasurer with an appointed, at least for two years or 18 months, treasurer. I don't think that that would meet what people were looking for, at least of what they seem to add on maintaining that elected independent treasurer. So I'd be much more comfortable in having the treasurer remain as a part-time oversight type of position and looking into hiring a finance officer under, whether it's a deputy treasurer, whatever we call it, but it would be something where that, they would still have that separate position, working with the administrator, with the council, but you could still maintain that treasurer as people voted on it in November.
I think, yeah, you and I, I think we're pretty, we're close. I think most of us are pretty much in agreement. I just think the question then is, is this person going to be a deputy treasurer who cannot respond to these day-to-day, these minute-to-minute requests from the town administrator, or is this person going to be a finance official who can?
Yeah, how we structure it is, and what we can legally do is what we're going to have to figure out.
This is why my question to the council president, to the council, is whether or not Mr. Tights, in that setting, look at it and see what could go to a finance official. Interviewed and appointed by the town administrator with advice and consent of the council as opposed to a deputy treasurer. And if you read the statute, Brian, the town administrator has nothing to do with the, with the appointment of the deputy treasurer. That's strictly a creature of the treasurer.
And that's why I'm saying, that's why we're going to, we're going to need Mr. Tights to let us know what we can and can't do, how we're going to structure it.
Well, I think it was very productive, and I think...
This is a symbol for infinity.
Yes, you may take leave. This has been a night of the imponderables. Okay. Now, let's see, folks. This is going to be on the agenda for Monday night?
And what exactly will be on the agenda for Monday night?
Well, I'm not, I guess, here's what I think might be on...
Discussion of financial office.
And with report by Mr. Tights.
Flash treasurer.
And I guess he's going to look at the question of appointing a finance director, a deputy treasurer, under the various laws, charter or general laws of the state. Is that accurate?
And he's going to do all this?
He's going to do all this by Wednesday morning.
At 7:00 AM.
No, I'm saying Wednesday morning.
If you want it for Monday, if you want it in advance of Monday. So how about if we just put continued discussion for the agenda?
That's fine. Continued from a workshop. We can do that, Nancy.
Well, we already had Jim's on the agenda, which would trouble us.
We just expanded. I'm just going to put this question from workshop. Okay. Now, the workshop has come to a glorious ending here. We will now move to a special meeting of the council.
Motion to enter into executive session under 4246582 litigation.
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Boland's motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Ann?
To remain in executive session for the discussion of the personnel issue with the police chief.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We are in the executive session.
What we just have to announce for the record.
Yes.
That regarding the executive session for personnel, Mr. Blakely has been informed and informed in writing of his right to have such session in public and has in writing waived, in fact requested that it be an executive session and waived his right to have it in public session.
And it's waived his presence?
Yes.
I have the left. We are in executive...